We'll go ahead and call the Wichita Board of Education Special Meeting of July 11th into order. We appreciate you joining us today. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have anyone signed up for public communications at this time, but I will see, ask, or request if there is anyone that's come in last minute. Seeing no one, we'll go on to the next item. Patrick?
Next item, reports.
I do not see ESOW with the S-E-I-U, so we'll move on to the second report. Patrick?
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Brent.
Hello. President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. It's good to see you all here today doing good work on behalf of the Wichita community. We appreciate a fair and transparent process for redistricting, and we hope that it results in a Board of Education that represents the full diversity of our community. With that, do good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, first review, updating Board of Education member boundaries.
And I'll allow, I mean, I'll give Dr. Thompson the opportunity to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. This particular item is in response to a board member, Julie Hedrick, who brought forth a board request because there was an issue brought to her by Cedric County that we were out of compliance in regards to State Statute 72-6769, where the statute reads that each board member district must be within a 5% positive or negative, the average population, based on the 2020 census within the school district's geographic boundary. And so because of that, we were given the task as staff to work with the county, and we'll go through the information that was provided to us through the county, and then begin to share this information out to public along with Board of Education members for their discussion and eventually vote on the maps. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague. There will be several of us that will be presenting this information, Wendy Johnson alongside of Mr. Fabian Armandares.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Wendy Johnson, Division Director of Strategic Communications, fighting a little bit of a frog, so forgive me if you hear my cough drop rattling around in my mouth. Fabian, Armandares and I are going to tag-team this presentation and share with you the maps that Cedric County GIS has developed at the request of the board to consider how we can correct the imbalance, as Dr. Thompson pointed out, through Kansas Statute 72-6769 that requires each of our six BOE member districts that have a geographic map to be within 5% plus or minus of the average population in our school district geographic boundary.
Wendy, before you move, we are using some acronyms here, and I don't want our community to not know exactly what GIS means.
Gotcha.
GIS is Geographic Information Services, and that is the GIS when we're referring to that, that's what that means.
Yep.
Just so that our community is aware. Sorry for the interruption, but just wanted to make sure everybody's clear.
No worries at all. We had it covered later, but thank you for adding that.
Thank you.
As we got started. So the 2020 census resulted in a population within our school district boundary of 330,665 individuals, and that's within the Wichita Public Schools geographic area, not necessarily City of Wichita, not necessarily Cedric County, because as you know, those lines don't align specifically. So we're obligated to look at what our school district's population is divided by six, because there are six geographically defined boundaries, and that's results in a target population of 55,110 individuals. So from there, it was simple math, and that resulted, as Dr. Thompson said, in Julie's district, District Two, being out of compliance because it exceeded that 5% threshold and is 6% above the target population. So that's why we're here today. I will tell you that the timeline for redistricting is very similar to the timeline in previous tenure increments. It takes a little bit of time from the census to move through the system and for the population information to be available to us. So about 10 years ago, the board was going through a very similar conversation, and we likely will 10 years from now, too. But that's why we're here, is that District Two is out of balance, and so we have an obligation to correct that imbalance and align with state statute. So the considerations for the 2022 revisions, the maps that you will see today, there were two things that staff looked at as we prepared to bring maps to you for your consideration. One is that the population requirement be met, that 55,110 threshold, and two, to consider whether at least one comprehensive high school could be located within each Board of Education district. And previously now, District Three does not have a high school in it. So part of what we looked at as we reflected on the maps that Cedric County GIS provided is whether there was at least one comprehensive high school in every BOE district. So, excuse me, as Dr. Thompson mentioned.
Tim, if you need me.
Fabian Armandares, Division Director of Operations. So as Dr. Thompson mentioned earlier today, these maps were developed by the Cedric County Geographical Information Services. They do this on a regular basis, a variety of interest maps, and if you look at their website, our BOE district map is one of the maps that they keep regularly updated and available for the public. Five options were provided to us for consideration after the initial request, and all five options you will see up here, app options, one or district plans, one through five is what they provided for us. Two of the options were removed or pulled out from consideration because they do not meet the one high school in every district criteria. So because of that, I believe options two and four were pulled out because of that reason. Option one was removed because it has the highest amount of variance, the biggest amount of differences, and involving moving the largest areas of the map, and because of that, option one was also pulled out from consideration. I will, and that's what led us to the two options, option three and option five, that we are reviewing today. Now, I will reiterate, and I will clarify, that all five maps, all five options will be available for feedback from the public. So at the end of this presentation, you'll see a website link, and we are going to make those available for our entire population to give us feedback on all five maps. But for purposes of this presentation, we're going to focus on the two options that met the entire criteria, and those were options three and five. There is no change to the district's geographical boundary, so we are not going outside of what has been the traditional USD 259 boundary. It takes a completely different process for a district to be able to acquire or reduce the area that they cover. So again, the outside boundary of the district remains intact, and we are not spilling outside of that. So without further ado, we're going to look at the different options that we have available. The first one is District Plan Three, and again, they're available up here. You all also have hard copies in front of you that include all of the options that we have. The map that the presentation is built from is from the basic map that is currently blank. The lines, as you see, represent the different districts, and the reason we picked this map to do this is because we wanted to highlight the actual changes that would be happening under this District Plan Three proposal. So the first thing is the area north of, the northern part of our boundary, of our district. That area in the green would now move from District Six to District One. Then there's an area to the northeast part of our city that belongs to District One that, under this proposal, will move to District Two. There's a part in the, again, in kind of the southern eastern portion of our district that would transition from District Two to District Three, and then there's a central corridor portion of our district that goes from District One to District Three. District Four loses what is the white elementary area in the south portion of our city. That would go from District Four to District Three. And then there is also kind of that Anderson Elementary portion that's a little bit south central that moves from District Three to District Four. And then, oh, I'm going backwards. And then district, there's a portion that goes from District Four to District Five in the southwestern part of our district, and then in the middle, towards the west, we have an area that goes from District Four to District Six. And then finally, there's a portion in the central corridor that currently belongs to District One that would go to District Six. So as you look at the map on the screen right now as part of this proposal, any person, any household that falls within all those areas highlighted would see their BOE district change from one to the other. So that is really the big highlight of District Plan Three. As we look at the second criteria, which is a high school in every single district, District Six would lose Northeast Magnet and Heights. They would lose that, and those would now transition to District One. No change for District Two, as they retain Southeast. District Three, which is the district that currently doesn't have a high school, would pick up East High School, so East High would transition from District One to District Three. No change for District Four, they retain South and West. No change for District Five, they retain Northwest, and District Six retains North, but loses Heights and Northeast Magnet to District One. Again, every BOE district under this proposal has a high school. The population differential under this proposal goes from a negative .76 to a negative, or to a .34. And also, just a reminder to our community and to everyone, that this BOE district map, the proposals, have no bearing on where students go to school. Those processes have ran separately. Back when we did this process 10 years ago, it was the same thing. It is always very separate from our attendance boundaries, which designate where students go to school. This has no bearing on where kids would attend. As we continue, the second option that was left on the table was District Plan Five. In similar process as last time, there is a similar area on the north side of the city that transitions from District Six to District One. A similar area goes from District One to District Two on the northeast part of the city. There's an area in the southeast part of our total district area that goes from District Three to District Two. There's also that central east portion that goes from Two to Three. There's also an area right next to it that goes from One to Three, and then a small sliver that goes from District Four to District, sorry, District Four to District Three. Then as we move, an area south of that goes from Three to Four, and then as we head to the west side of the city, District Four picks up a small portion from District Five, and then District Five picks up a small portion from District Four, so they kind of flip-flop a small area. There's an area a little bit north of that that goes from District Four to District Five, and that same central corridor piece goes from District One to District Six. And then there's a small sliver right below that that goes from Four to Six. Again, as we look at this map, anyone that resides within the areas highlighted would see their BOE district change under this proposal for District Five. So the areas of impact are somewhat similar between District Five, between District Plan Five and District Plan Three. As we continue, there's really no significant changes from the District Three proposal in terms of the high schools. The high school composition is the same under both District Plan Three and District Plan Five. So again, District Six loses Heights and Northeast Magnet to District One. No change to District Two because they keep Southeast. District Three picks up East High School from District One. Again, that is the one district that currently doesn't have a high school. There is no change to District Four, it retains South and West, and then District Five retains Northwest. Again, District Six retains North, but they lose Heights and Northeast Magnet. We have a high school in every district under this proposal, too. The population differential at this point moves from a negative .04 to a negative .06, and again, just a reminder that none of these have bearings on where students go to school. It is a separate process. So that's really it in regards to maps. I don't know if Wendy wants to wrap us up.
I have a question.
Yes?
Just a quick question. I can't see on the maps here nor there. The District, where does Hamilton and Harry Street, are they in District Six or in District Three? Yeah, I've got it the same way.
Um...
Hamilton moves to...
I believe, I believe Mayberry switches under one of the plans, but I'm not sure which one.
Yeah, on Plan Five.
Harry Street moves to District Six.
Is Hamilton, because Hamilton is right on that street, it's on the west side of that street, so would that put it in District Six?
Yeah, it would move to District Six from current to District Four. Yeah, it moves from District Six from District Four, Hamilton does.
Under Plan Five.
Under Plan Five, right.
Under Plan Three, it would stay in Four.
Correct. That's what I want. Because it's a boundary line, that street is a boundary line between Three and Six, and I couldn't tell which one it ended up in.
And again, just to, we'll probably say this 100 times before we final approve a map, but like this example that is brought up about Hamilton and Harry Street Elementary, again, this is strictly about the district's BOE boundaries, not the district boundaries of Hamilton and Harry Street.
That is absolutely correct. Let's remember that the goal of this piece is to balance out all districts to be around that 55,000 number, and the way, again, it was strictly a numbers game from Cedric, I would assume Cedric County's GIS. So again, they were the ones that created the lines based on being able to balance out the populations to that 55,130, I believe.
110.
110, yeah.
Number.
I have a question.
And you're good.
I have a question.
Yes, Hazel?
Once we vote on this, when is the, when are we planning to implement this? When will it become effective?
You want to go on to the next steps.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll address that.
Yeah.
So this is your first review, and forgive me for stepping away earlier. Tomorrow, we'll have all of the maps, the presentation, and a link to your video discussion on the BOE website, and we'll have a web forum that will allow stakeholders who may have the desire to provide feedback to share that, and then all of that feedback will be shared with each of you as board members. We'll come back to you on the 25th for a second review and anticipated adoption of a new map. At that point, we will submit your new plan to the Cedric County Election Commissioner, and they'll go about the business of moving it through the system and getting the changes made. When it actually shows up on voter registration cards, according to the election commissioner, likely may not be until after the November election because of workload and other issues that that office is dealing with. It will definitely be in place by your next Board of Education election, which would be November of '23.
Hazel, excuse me, Kathy?
Thank you, Wendy. I just want to know, how long will the map be online for our community to look at?
Our anticipation is that we would collect feedback through the 22nd, so essentially two weeks, and then we'll capture any feedback received by that point and send it out to all of you. We won't take the maps down, but in terms of collecting the feedback and sharing that feedback with board members, we would anticipate sharing that with you after the close of business on the 22nd.
And if I may follow up with that, will there be, for the lack of better words, a disclaimer on that that says that the other three maps are not in consideration, but we did post them for you?
Yeah, we'll put all, we'll put all five of the maps that are displayed here on the website.
But they'll know that they're only going to be looking at predominantly two that we can consider.
Yeah.
Great, okay. I would hate for...
We wanted to share everything so folks could know that there were other maps prepared by Cedric County GIS, but in looking through the lens of both the population standards and the high school standard.
Right.
The two that are forward for your consideration were the best options as we looked through those lenses.
I guess our district is growing.
In certain parts of town, it is.
Very good, very, very good presentation. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Fabian or I? Any, any feedback, Mr. President, that you would have for us to impact what we might bring back to you on the 25th or what we might post online?
No, I think we're, I think we're good to go. I think there's a couple of points that come to my mind in that Map Three, District Plan Three, changes fewer areas, which I think gives Map Three a little bit of an advantage. I think we're correct in trying to get back to the days of having one high school in each, at least one high school in each district, which was the case before Southeast High School moved from this building to the new location farther southeast. So if you look at that criteria, and if you look at the amount of changes that you want to do, plus Map Three tends to look like it have, it fits the state statute better of being compact than Map Five does, but I think it's also important for the public to understand that all five maps are legal, all five maps meet the criteria except for the high school requirement or suggestion. And so if there is public feedback that would say, here's what we want to do, here's what I would like to see in Map Four, and also meet your criteria, we are open for any and all suggestions. And so I would encourage the public to, once these are online tomorrow, we will not be taking any action on this today, and then we will hopefully have a smooth process and finish this up by the 25th. Any other questions, or Diane?
Could we also include a chart of the schools that are changing potential Board of Education districts?
Yes, definitely.
But it's not changing where they go to school, just what their Board of Education representative is.
Yes, and we wanted to get, thank you for asking that question. We wanted to get feedback from board members today, and then we'll go through and take a quick look at where changes might happen in schools that fall under each of your board districts.
Is there anyone that disagrees that Map, District Map Plan Three and District Map Plan Five are the frontrunners and should be featured prominently, or do you have another map that you much prefer? Cheryl?
I support holding with Three and Five because they meet our criteria, and there's not that many changes between them if you look at any one of these maps, but I think the criteria of having a high school in every district is very important.
Say again. Of the height, of the high school. Yeah, and that's, and that is important for the public to understand, too, that that criteria of having a high school in each district is not required, it's not mandatory. So if the public identifies some specific reasons on why Maps One, Two, and Four should be brought back up to the forefront, we will definitely listen to those suggestions and those ideas, because that is not a legal requirement of having a high school in each district. It's just something that we have traditionally had and which we lost when we moved Southeast High School. Julie?
Thank you.
I agree with Cheryl. I think Three and Five are the appropriate forerunners. Again, realizing that it's not a legal requirement to have a high school in each district, but I think the USD 259 prefers that, plus I think traditionally board members have preferred that. So, and then I also agree with your comments, Stan, that out of those two, that District Plan Three kind of even rises, rises above for the reasons you mentioned, and predominantly it seems like that there's the least changes from the original maps, and also the conciseness that you identified that is, that is important as far as Cedric County election standards. So just agreeing with Cheryl on Stan.
Thank you, Julie. You said it better than I did. Ernestine?
I again want to emphasize so that the public can, and the parents can understand, this doesn't have anything to do with your children and where they go to school. What will happen is the next election in November of 2023, the person that represents that particular district would get the vote from everybody within those lines, but it wouldn't change anything about where the children go to school. I wanted to make sure when I was looking at these, that they were contiguous, that they were compact together, that they weren't like strung out and with a tail over here, and I do think that these, quite frankly, all the maps do pretty well on that. But I do think that Three and Five do it particularly well in which you can see neighborhoods together, and they can then together contact their board member with any of the positions or issues that they have at their schools. I like the idea of having one high school in everything, in every district, just because trying to keep up with what's going on in all of the schools in one's district is much easier if, I had very few schools in my district this year, and some others had a whole lot of schools to go to everything that was in their district. So to spread the workaround and to spread the representation around and make us available for the public when they need to be able to get hold of a school board member.
Thank you, Ernestine. Kathy?
I need to ask, did we decide, or have we figured out if there are no minority precincts or neighborhoods being separated through this number Three and Five?
That's a good question.
We know that our community is increasingly more diverse, so it's a little hard to say because I'm not sure that in many cases you would find explicit circles or squares or rectangles or whatever drawn on maps. We did look at the area around Lovature Spate and Mueller, which is the historic AAA area in our community, and that is whole, except for Lovature actually falls outside of one or both of the District One lines in both Three and Five, but the residences, the line becomes the canal route, the highway, and then the area that we traditionally see as heavily Hispanic in our community near Cloud Park Irving remains as part of District Six. But again, we know that we have diverse populations represented across our community and our schools, so... schools, so beyond identifying some particular historic neighborhoods in our community, I don't know that we could get any more granular than that.
We need to be very careful with that because it's illegal to divide a minority neighborhood or a precinct, and I just want to make sure that we're okay with these maps. I don't want us to get in trouble.
Okay, nobody does.
And then, and that's actually a good point, Kathy, because we will also make sure that the ethnic back breakdown of each new district will be identified in the maps, too. So any person in the public can look at the population breakdown as well.
Yeah, I think that would be important to note as individuals may be looking at the maps online, though the text is really small at the bottom of each of the maps. Cedric County GIS was able to both look at population overall, which is what they consider for that 55,110 threshold, but then they were also able to look into each of the six geographic districts and segment by ethnic population as collected in the census. So all of that information is included at the bottom of each one of these maps.
And the good news is, if you would have compared these neighborhood breakdowns 10 years ago, it's better, we are more diverse and integrated now than we were 10 years ago, and if you compared it to 20 years ago and 30 years ago, you are really talking about major changes. So it is an issue that we have to keep our eye on, but it can happen more natural now than in previous decades.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Like I said, there is no vote on these today. We will have plenty of time to, and we encourage the public to look at these maps, fill out the form on the website, or contact your BOE member or all of us on your thoughts and your concerns, or your approval or disapproval of a map, and we will definitely take everything into consideration before a final vote on July 25th.
Will we have speakers on July 25th if they want to come?
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that.
They can either contact us, contact any one of us, or they can just...
Show in person, absolutely.
Sign up and speak that night. Okay.
Yes, and the public announcement of this meeting also invited people, so there will be, we'll definitely have an opportunity for the 25th.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that people understand, we, as a matter of fact, I don't think any one of us has a particular reason to like one map for another because of our own personal districts. It isn't an issue like that. We just want to make sure that we get as close to a fair division in each of the districts so that the lines come as close as they can to the 55,110.
Yes, this was, this was very, these maps were grown organically with the target...
By the election office.
Yes, with the target number of being 55,110. The only thing we included into that was the preference to have a high school in each district. All right, thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Hazel, do you have any consent items to pull?
No, I do not.
Cheryl?
I have nothing to pull, thank you.
Kathy?
I have one.
Okay.
A1.
The human resources one?
Yes.
Julie?
I have nothing to pull, but I do just want to acknowledge that we have on this consent agenda adding a safe room addition at Bryant, which will then consider all of our attendance centers having a safe room. And the only reason they didn't have one previously was for a time that school was closed, at the time that we were doing bond issue work and adding storm shelters, that was a closed facility. So I'm just very pleased that now we will have a safe room at every attendance center. So don't need to pull it, total in support, but just wanted to acknowledge that.
I appreciate you bringing that information to us, Julie. I have no consent agendas to pull. Ernestine?
I have nothing to pull.
Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda except for A1.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero, A1. Kathy?
Thank you. On the agenda for June 13th, there was a recommendation that the board approve the district's use of NATS for background screening checks in an amount not to exceed $65,000 for the '22-'23 fiscal year. Should additional quantities be required, the services shall be billed at the contracted price and shall not be returned to the board. That was passed at that thing, and so I'm a little confused, and I just need some understanding here, where it said that it would not be brought back to the board, and now it's being brought back to the board for an additional $61,000, and I'm a little confused.
Sean?
Sean, that's the Chief Human Resource Officer. Good afternoon, board members, President Reeser. Ms. Bond, to address your question, that amount, as it was stated on there, was put on the June 13th agenda in error. That was an amount from the prior year. This last year, what we did is we increased the number of services through NATSBI, or National Screening Bureau, that's the acronym for them, because the district took advantage of going electronic with its I-9 employment verifications for the Department of Immigration, as well as doing background checks, or I'm sorry, drug screens for all positions in the district, not just selected ones. Therefore, through the increase of the services and the amount of volume that was hiring, the $126,000 amount that is now on your agenda is correct as a not-to-exceed number. It was just a number that was prior transposed from the previous year contract with NATSBI, and so that was done in error, and we apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good eye, Kathy. And Sean, my understanding is we run around 2,000 to 3,000 background checks a year?
Yeah, just a little north of 2,000.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we approve item A1.
I second it.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Ernestine. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you, Sean. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment.
And before we adjourn, I would just like to make sure the board members know our next meeting is a regular board meeting, which we've mentioned a couple times in this meeting, but it's July 25th, 6:00 PM at North High, and I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Ernestine to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We'll see everyone on July 25th.